When I'm better.
What if I say something that not so much?
And just gonna become part of the record forever, John.
Is recording really gonna stop you from doing that?
I have so. Yes, it's still worse.
Uh, at what?
He's wearing shirts, a shirt with sleeves tonight, so.
You're welcome, you're welcome, everyone. This is usually pretty hot in here. Did I ever come in with this? Oh, yeah, I guess. Was it one time? Was it one time? Oh, yeah. I see that guy every day.
Yeah. You had that one coming.
I feel like that was a good idea to wear sleeveless that day.
No, maybe not.
Jeff would agree, sweat just as much as I do. But Jeff, can you help me out over here or what? Okay, good. See? Jeff should actually have his own fan. He's gonna wear a lot of stuff.
He has legit excuse.
Or you could start showing up sleeveless, too.
No.
That'd be great.
Earlier on, but. I'm sorry.
I don't know, whatever.
This is everything I have, you know, it's just hard copy version, though. Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, at six o'clock, we call the village nuclear board meeting to order. Please silence the show and refrain from using during meeting. Look for an approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both motion carries. Public comparisons and citizen comments on items not listed on this agenda. Items will not be debated or acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff committee if action is required, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone who speaks speaking. Okay, moving on approval and consent agenda, but I think we gotta make connection on item D, right?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the following corrections from page fourteen and fifteen. Canter Inn. Well, not canter, Dirty Dog, Half House, instead of Sixth Street, it should be Sixth Avenue. The Duke Stash, instead of Seventh Street, should be Seventh Avenue. Lolly Gag Antique should be Sixth Avenue rather than Sixth Street. And Railroad Boutique could be Seventh Avenue rather than Seventh Street. And Lolly Gag Antique also appears on page sixteen. And that should also be third number street there. And it's very confusing streets and avenues. I understand. I know. It is.
We have motion on the second? Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both motion carries. New business. Item A, consideration discussion certified survey map to devise the existing farmstead and twelve point four acres at W sixty-one eighteen Durst Road from remainder of parcel number two three zero two four zero one one seven zero 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 zero. And Mr. Bader is here. If you have any questions, uh, we had an E T Z meeting before this one, and we passed it, and it's passed the township. It's just, uh, all we need to do is approve it here at the board and forward.
And our village planner did review it, has no concerns. Uh, the only thing he mentioned is that the only way to divide this lot further into smaller lots is if they would hook up to public utilities. Um, but I don't believe that's the intention of the soon to be owner, so he was Mark Rockford signed off on it.
I'm looking to approve C S M to divide existing farmstead and twelve point four acres at W six-one-one-eight Durst Road for remainder of parcel number two three zero two four zero one one seven zero 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 zero.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Go.
Thanks, Brad, appreciate it.
Okay, item D. Consideration discussion twenty twenty-six proposed fire district budget. I believe that's why you're in here.
At quite a different.
Okay.
I believe you've all got copies of the budget. And, uh, at this point in time, we're looking at a two point four eight percent increase over last year. Uh, which was really whittled down to the point where we couldn't go any farther. Uh, we've got increases in insurance and an audit that has to be worked into the budget this year. Of course, you're very well aware of the fact that there will be a new truck coming in. And, uh, that itself is a heck of a lot. That's the way it is today. Uh, the village's portion uh, with the two percent set off seventy-one thousand ninety-seven seventy-two.
Yep, that's correct.
And then with the two percent reimbursement, I don't know if you're aware of what that is, but that is appearance premiums that are paid back to the fire district. Their fire protection from your insurance carry. And, uh, we have to attain a certain rating in order to uh, get those reimbursed. Uh, about the only way we could increase this and, uh, would be to, uh, go to a full-time department. And the cost would not offset, so. And plus the fact that we have to be very realistic. Um, where it's getting harder and harder to get volunteers. So, anyway, that is our total budget for, uh, this year. And I was very happy with it, to be very honest with you.
Yeah, thanks for putting this together. It's very easy to read and transparent.
Could read the department, the district, and
Yeah. It doesn't get much better than that.
So, who actually does all the numbers? Is it the secretary or?
No, it's actually, it's actually the chief and the chief officers, the district board. And, uh, everybody has an input.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, so Brad knows how this works, and this is the same with every year. So the board can choose to, um, accept the proposal. Obviously, the actual village budget is not fully approved until November, the second meeting in November. They understand that. Um, but just like, you know, everything else we've discussed, it's the intent that we budget this for.
And one of the things with the, uh, district, we are required to meet with each municipality to get their okay before we go ahead. And actually get the money.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to realize, in addition to this, the firefighters themselves, the Glares Fire Department raises over fifty thousand dollars a year. That either goes into equipment, vehicles, uh, they just spend, uh, I don't know what the final figure, that was fifty-six thousand. I can't be quoted on that for the new floor covering.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah.
Well, then uniforms, too. So many fires you go to, you can't keep using.
Yeah. And now, one of the problems that we have is and they have P A standards all for the replacement of turnout here, your bunker bands, you go to the software. And you're looking probably at about three grand apiece per man.
Um, so I'm gonna motion to approve the twenty twenty-six proposed fire district budget.
Okay. Okay, we have a further discussion? You have none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that.
You'll send us a, uh, copy of the minutes.
Yep, yep. So they'll get approved at the next meeting, which is on February first, and I'll send it to you after that. And then I'll also send you the minutes once the whole budget is approved in November, just for your records. Great.
Anything we can help with, let us know.
Thanks, Brad.
Brad, really.
A good deal. For seventy-seven thousand dollars, you get thirty-six, uh, available twenty-four seven.
Wow.
Uh, not a bad deal.
Think anyone can fix cars?
Uh, not very well.
Yeah. Actually, I've seen that.
Take care.
Thank you. Thanks, Brad.
Okay, item C, consideration discussion R T five dash thirteen, appointing a full-time police officer.
Yeah, so I pass out the resolution to you all. Um, we, um, finalized it, and we're really excited. Uh, Chief Servant can obviously answer any questions or talk a little bit more on Officer Holtline that we're hiring. Um, but Molly is one of our part-time officers currently.
Whole team.
Whole team, full-time.
Whole team.
Sorry, whole team. Um, Molly is one of our, currently one of our part-time officers here, um, coming to us from a neighboring community to become full-time. Um, Chief, did I miss anything there?
Pretty much summed it up.
Any background on experience?
She's been a twenty-two years.
Oh. Yeah, she's, she's been around a while.
Which is why she's she's coming in, um, if you notice on the resolution, with some credited experience, um, for pay and vacation purposes. And that is why, because of her, obviously, long tenure in policing, so.
Cool.
And no cavity. I mean, she's coming in with a little reduced price, sort of.
Yeah, right. We haven't had someone with a cavity yet.
Yeah.
Still gotta hire one, because one leaves at the end of the month.
Yeah. Yeah.
This will, yeah, this will help at least maintain the level that we're at now, um, for the most part, and then we'll hit around hiring again, so.
Uh, just quickly, Jeff, you haven't started that hiring process to replacement of Hunter yet, have you?
No, because he isn't.
Oh, you got wait till he leaves?
And I was waiting for the union contract, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, motion to approve resolution twenty-five thirteen, hiring Molly Holtine?
I second.
Okay, was the aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item D, consideration discussion private wastewater disposal, parcel number two three one six one zero six two eight zero zero two zero zero. Now, is everybody familiar with where this is?
Okay, yeah. This is on Elmer Road. It's right on the edge of the village limits. Um, very close to our wastewater treatment plant facility. Um, Peter Johnson is a property owner, um, and I spoke with him. Um, this is honestly somewhat of a standard procedure, uh, because he meets the guidelines of our ordinance. Uh, it's somewhat of a formality, um, but our ordinance clearly states that public sanitary sewer is not available. Any building sewer can be connected to a private wastewater disposal system, um, with the caveat that it has village board approval and it complies with village ordinance. So village ordinance kind of goes into detail what that private, um, sanitary sewer has qualifications it has to meet. So, um, this property will be hooking up to village electric and village water, uh, but because sewer is not readily accessible there, they can put in their own septic. And the ordinance is in your packet if you want to review it.
But if we ever extend sewer our pastor, then he's gonna have to hook up. That's in the ordinance also.
So how, how far does it go currently? It goes past, I do the place, right?
Do not.
The, the old, uh, the old vet clinic, Randy's old clinic did not have, oh, we had, we, it was, it was not part of the sewer system there either. And now it flows. There's a, we, uh, sign for an easement, right, that flows right out into the Sugar River. There's another pipe that's going out that way.
Um, the closest residential point is the, uh, Prairie House Apartments.
Over by the hotel?
Yeah. So that would be the closest, uh, connection point.
Coomer's Farm is not, it's in the village, but it isn't hooked up to, uh, to us. And his driveway is gonna, his place can be just a little bit around the bend
from there. So it goes to that hotel, but not beyond it.
By about a little beyond that. Yeah.
Oh, okay, the new one, yeah.
So like Carly, uh, Mammy, is that one hooked up? Cause that's where, okay, that's the other.
It's getting my folks.
Yeah. So.
All right, so motion to approve uh, wastewater disposal for parcel number two three one six one zero six two zero zero two zero zero.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item E, consideration discussion C F S W grant for Candy Cane Park Communication Board.
Yeah, so, um, you may remember this from last year. It may sound familiar. Uh, village resident Jamie Chetler, uh, has once again offered to write a grant for a communication board. This time it would be going in Candy Cane Park. Um, it might be a little hard to see, but this was what got put in Village Park last, this past summer. Um, it's a communication board to help, uh, children communicate, whether if they aren't able to communicate yet, if they're young enough, or if they're not verbal, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it allows them to effectively, uh, communicate or gives them an option to better communicate. So it'd be a really great addition. Um, it's been a really welcome addition at Village Park. Um, and she is willing to write one for Candy Cane Park. Um, Scott and I met with her this week to determine location of it. Um, but she's writing the grant for all the costs, and it'll be one of those deals that if we get the grant, we will do it, and if we don't, we won't do it. So really a, a great deal for the village and for park users.
I'm looking to approve the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin Grant for Candy Cane Park Communication Board.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item F, consideration, excuse me, consideration discussion twenty twenty-six cost of living adjustment longevity pay. It's on forty-four plus, yes.
Yeah, so in your packet is the personnel handbook portion of the longevity pay, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but I want to start with the cost of living adjustment. Um, that is a memo that I handed out to you. Um, so this is something that the board reviews and approves every single year. Uh, Finance and Personnel Committee reviewed it yesterday, um, and I included what their recommendation was in here. Uh, but basically this year, we presented, last year for twenty-five, we received a three percent COLA increase. Um, we're presenting a three percent and a three and a half percent increase for next year. As everybody knows, even though our, you know, budget constraints are incredibly tight for next year, we really do try to have at least some kind of increase in that COLA because inflation is going up every single year, so, uh, we want to recognize that for our employees. Um, the memo kind of breaks down what the estimated wage and rent costs would be next year with the same COLA we got this in twenty-five. Um, and then the additional cost if the board approves a three and a half percent, which is obviously pretty minor cost compared to the overall wage and fringe costs. So the Personnel and Finance Committee did recommend the three and a half percent COLA for employees in twenty twenty-six. Um, just like the fire district, just like the chalet, everything else we talked about. It's not official until it's approved in the second meeting of November, until the whole village budget is approved. But it's really important to understand that if you want to revisit this in October, it will drastically change budget numbers. So it's really important for staff to be able to budget plan effectively. So that would be the first thing I would ask the board to review is the cost of living.
We, we have finance personnel look at uh, two million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. In that scenario, another four thousand dollars isn't gonna make much difference.
Yeah.
Like, oh, from three percent up to three and a half.
Right.
So when you're talking for you, you mean this sheet could give everybody who gets.
Um, the COLA, uh, no, not everybody on the payroll. Most folks on the payroll do. Um, all of our full-time staff, um, all of our part-time staff, the only staff that really don't are seasonal, certain seasonal staff members. Um, and that was something that the board determined a long time ago. Um, but most of our employees do get that. Um, it's really just like lifeguards. Trying to think.
So where does it define employees then?
What was that? I'm sorry. That's longevity pay. We're talking COLA.
We're talking, you aren't talking like longevity.
That's an additional, something else.
That's the next thing we discussed.
Oh, yeah. So in terms of in terms of the cost of living adjustment, um, almost all village employees get it outside of, as I said, like lifeguards, um. Yeah, all of our year-round employees get it. Um, our park and pool director gets it, our part-time police officers get it, our part-time staff in the library get it, um, so.
Okay.
You cut me total.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, motion to approve twenty twenty-six cost of living adjustment.
At what percentage?
Three and a half.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No.
Yeah, so longevity, as Larry, um, looked at, I included that snippet from the personnel handbook in your packet. Um, so just a little background on this. Uh, we have longevity payments. It's, longevity payments have been in place since the early two thousands. They were last reviewed and up, and updated in twenty seventeen. Um, but right now, there are four different levels, um, with different ranges, and there's lump sums given at the end of the year to those that have had continuous service to the village. Um, so if you work for two years, leave, and then come back, you start over. Um, and this would also wouldn't count if somebody has credited, you know, ten years of service when they get here. This is actual sort of the student. Um, so just to give you an idea of who we're paying this out to, um, right now, we have five employees based on current employment status. And I say based on current employment status because the personal handbook clearly states that if you leave before the end of the year, you forfeit your COLA payment. Um, so in twenty twenty-five, we'll have five.
Just that year, just that one year. Right?
Correct, yeah. So this is paid out every single year, but for example, if Jeff leaves tomorrow, he's not getting his, his longevity payment for twenty twenty-five.
Is it pro-rated for Trump?
No, this is not pro-rated. It's very clearly.
Half time, you still get the.
No, no, and I'll explain that. Um, so for twenty twenty-five, the village has five employees that, um, we are paying this out to. Three are at the two hundred and fifty dollar level, which is the five to twelve years. One's at the six fifty level, which is nineteen to twenty-four years. And one is at the eight fifty level, which is the twenty-five plus years. The only employees currently that get this are full-time employees, and then we have one part-time employee that was added to this, um, years ago, um, that gets it, and she is our longest-tenured employee at the village at this point. Um, so the Personnel and Finance Committee did review this. Uh, they reviewed the amounts. They recommended doubling the current amounts. Um, that's all listed there. They left the ranges as is, and this is always something that, you know, next year, the following year, if the board wants to come back and revisit and change these ranges or whatever, you certainly can. Um, but they recommended doubling the amounts. I have those listed in the memo, and then, um, they also wanted to add the language that states only full-time employees are eligible for longevity payments unless an employee has previously received village longevity payments. Meaning that anybody that currently receives them is grandfathered in. But, um, if that person would leave and we would fill that person's spot with another part-time employee, that person would not be eligible for the longevity. Um, you know, I really look at longevity as, as a a reward, if you will, for loyalty for our full-time staff. And we will have five also next year getting those payments. So, uh, the Finance and Personnel Committee also recommended changing these as of this year. Um, that's all up to board discussion, so.
And there's no year-end bonus?
No, no. So the outside of the union employees, which the only union employees here are the police officers, and they operate under kind of a different schedule. Um, but they also are subject to longevity payments. The only wage increases on a regular basis we have here are COLA, and that's if we're, the board approves it and is able to do it, and then the longevity.
And how many full-time employees does the village have?
Uh, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Mm-hmm. One, one more police staff. Yeah. Again, sorry. I was just gonna say, too, we did have many more receiving this, but we had a large group of people retired. Um, so we had, we had quite a few people in that twenty to thirty, forty-year range, really, um, and they recently retired within the last few years, so.
Yeah, I honestly missed yesterday's meeting because I put the date in the wrong, or I put the day in the wrong calendar. So I put something together because I was interested in this longevity issue, and, um, it's very hard to find comparables because nobody's doing it. Very few small communities are doing it anymore. So I just put something together, and I just wanted you guys to, uh, since it wouldn't send, again, my fault. Um, I, and ours is a minimal amount, but it's something we have to consider down the road in terms of health insurance and all those other things that keep increasing. But it said, uh, some of the comments that I made and some of the, uh, things I put together from how, uh, my websites responded. You, longevity pay used to be very common in municipal government. It was seen as a way to reward uh, loyalty and retain staff in some small towns where wages weren't as competitive. But in today's environment, it's less routine. The trend in Wisconsin, many municipalities have scaled back or eliminated longevity pay over the past ten to fifteen years. Instead, they rely on cost of living increases, COLA, step increases, performance-based raises. And some villages have it on the books, which I saw when I researched. There were lots of villages that have it on the books, but the amounts are oftentimes not given or just modest, modest. Uh, retention and recruitment, younger workers often place high value on health insurance, retirement contribution, flexible schedules, and professional development opportunities. So longevity bonuses don't influence their decision to apply as much as overall pay and benefits. And the physical reality of it all is with budgets tight, boards often view longevity as an unnecessary extra cost, especially when employees already have full health insurance coverage, dental, COLA, and solid wages. There are also our equity issues, longevity rewards only for those who stay, but it doesn't motivate newer employees. Some boards replace longevity with step systems, uh, predictable increases tied to performance or ten, ten years. So in short, um, it isn't the routine anymore. So just to put it in perspective, not to say I agree or disagree. I, I'm just saying that somewhere down the road, um, the chickens will come home to roost, and we will have to meet the dollar sign. So, um, I'm not saying this is very modest. But, um, you know, we give COLA, we give a lot of those other things, and I'm not saying you guys don't deserve it, but just to put it in perspective, um, what we're looking at in terms of longevity. I mean, the days are gone of the old Rolex watch for fifty years because young people move around so much.
Two fifty isn't gonna incentivize anybody to stay, or even five hundred.
Even the nine, I mean, it's not. What did I have? Um, I wanted to read to you. I did have some comparables that I did find. Um, but they were minimal like ours, middle point, uh, Bellville, Benamore, uh, five to eleven years. Um, five to eleven years, you get two dollars a month. Twelve to twenty years, you get three fifty a month. Merrill, um, five hundred and forty dollars at eighteen years. Um, Lancaster, six hundred dollars at twenty years, and, and there's other tiers. Um, so, you know, it's not a ton, but it is something that, you know, that we could look at and maybe incentivize in other ways, because it really is sort of an embarrassment in the, in the amounts. It's really minimal.
Oh, because you don't think it's enough?
But that.
You, you think it's such a low amount of money that.
I think we, I, I personally, after looking at everybody's, I think we incentivize in another way.
Yeah, it just, it just really doesn't.
This is totally.
It's no incentive to new.
No, it's not.
It's really just giving a bonus for staying here.
Right.
Right.
Which is a long time. There's only seven people.
Five people.
No, but I, what I'm saying, it, it
would never encourage me to stay.
Right.
It's so minimal.
But it is nice to, I mean, if that's something that people appreciate, I'd much rather give them that.
But they said they don't. They said people don't. They would rather have incentivization, incentivization in other ways, like another day off or, um, another sick day, or they would rather have it in other ways. It says most people are not, you know, with the mobility of the workforce, most people are not. Again, you know, I, I just want to throw it out there that maybe the train's leaving, and we just need to get out of the little more and look at it in another way.
I would either want to get rid of it because only five people get it.
Mm-hmm.
Or, um, stop calling it longevity pay and just make it like more of a bonus. And so if you've been here a year, then you get two hundred, you know, a year, four years, you get X amount, and then that way, everybody gets something.
Well, and I know Kelsey's on the budget, you know, doing the budget right now, so maybe it's not for this year.
Right.
But maybe we revisit it at another time and say, okay, let's look at this longevity. If it's old school, let's find another way to.
Should we approve it?
Yeah, we can take a look at it later.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add, just maybe as a devil's advocate, and this isn't coming from an employee perspective, but just more from like an administrator and just to hire somebody that's having to hire quite a few people. Um, you know, I think we're talking a lot like this isn't gonna make people stay. Well, people are leaving here, so we need to try something. And I would also say, you know, one of the points you added, Peggy, was that instead of doing this, municipalities are increasing wages or having steps. And I would also say, you know, one of the points you added Peggy was that instead of doing this, municipalities are increasing wages or having step. We have none of that. The only people that have that are union employees.
Well, I mean, at some point, like as insurance goes up, you know, you said insurance went up twelve percent. And you're paying twelve dollars. I mean, I remember when I was in the workforce, when that went up, we had to take cuts, you know? So at some point it might get out of our reach, uh, to be able to offer that. Um, all the time and I'm not saying that I want to do that. I'm just saying that we need to take.
Yeah.
Look at it. But if you look at Hunter, you know, we did work with him, um, and he still left. So, I mean, I, I don't know if people are really, um, going to be moved by that, so maybe down the road we take a look at it, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, to me, it was just more of, we have the people that are receiving this, um, a couple, I mean. The people that are receiving this, their staff underneath them are getting wages and they are not. So it's more of just like something, you know? The other thing I will add, and I'm glad you brought it up because it reminded me, um, so I, we are also working on health insurance numbers. Um, and you'll see this in October first, and this goes along with longevity and whole life. I just want to add this in since we're talking about this. You'll see this at the October first, uh, village board meeting, but, um, as we always have done, the village usually pays the maximum percentage, which is eighty-eight percent. Um, that's the most we can pay of the premium. Um, it was kind of a, a unique year this year where because we're in that Dane County UW courts pocket. And all of our full-time employees take insurance and all of them take the same UW courts plan. Um, this year it's twelve dollars a month for our family plan. Next year, because of how the math worked out, it would have been zero dollars. So because we have such a tight budget year next year, staff, um, looked at what if we keep, kind of like what we did with the property levy, what if we keep that consistent? Um, so we crunched a bunch of numbers and in order to afford the cola, in order to help afford increased longevity pay. We said, okay, let's keep the family plan at fifteen dollars a month and keep the single plan at just around nine dollars a month. And just doing that saved the village almost thirty thousand dollars next year. Um, so that is what's in the budget right now and that's what I'll be presenting at the next board meeting when we go through our workshop, but just something to keep in mind in terms of how to. Fund these things. Now, obviously, as you mentioned Peg, one of the biggest benefits, in my opinion, of working here is the benefits. Um, I've worked for the state in other, another place and the benefits were nowhere near as good as they are here. So I would say that this was a unique year that we're able to drop that percentage a little bit and really not impact employees much more than what they are this year. But I would advocate that, you know, we should definitely. Consider moving that back up to the eighty-eight percent and for future years when this is not the situation. Um, this is just kind of a weird year. So just to note in terms of. It wasn't just that we brought all this stuff to you with no way to fund it. This was one of the things we were looking at is like they have some cost savings here. Um, but overall Peg, I definitely agree with you. I think wages need to be looked at. Um, and I know we've talked about it quite a bit, um, so I don't think longevity necessarily solves that problem. It was just. Just something that got brought up amongst staff discussion that.
Can we flag this for, uh, personnel, finance to, to look at like early next year so they can.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this year we're paying two thousand fifty dollars for it. What, how can you use two thousand fifty dollars to, to entice somebody new?
So the one thing I would say is that this year we're locked in, uh, because we approved it via resolution at the beginning of the year, so employees.
Double, let's show.
No.
Thousand for next year. Next year.
So I just, I just want to clarify that we are locked in at the current rates for this year. So employees, that was approved last year, so employees are expecting to get those payments. So doing away with this for this year would not be a good option. Um, but yes, Larry, you're correct. Next year and years beyond, um, what can we do with that money? I'm, I'm.
Well, can, can we have a pool? Can we put in a pool that covers, uh, covers the sick pay? If somebody doesn't have sick time loss, like a single mom or a single dad.
Well, and that can be what personnel finance discusses.
Right, right. And I will, what I will add too is we. As employees get a ton of vacation and sick time and not only that, but we, we, if you remember, we recently changed our donation policy for sick time. We had some employees that underwent some pretty serious health issues. And they were able to cover a good chunk of their leave that lasted months with their own time and. Donate a time and they still came back with time in the bank. Um, so I would, if I could speak on behalf of the current employees here, more time is not something that they're looking for benefit.
Yeah.
Because you're providing. Exactly. Increase and better benefits also not something that we're looking for. We are looking for more, more money whether it comes in the form of.
I think just look at our monitors in our pillars and say, you know, what have you seen as a trend that really does incentivize, incentivize your. Yeah, well, in different municipalities, because, you know, we're, we're, uh, troubleshooting here from, uh. I mean, we're not on the train and so. I don't know. I'd have to do my own exploration to find out, but maybe they could. Move it, expedite it by saying, well, this has worked in this village and this has worked in this village and we can look. And if it's money that seems to work in all the villages, then we need to take a better look at it.
Yeah, you know, and I think the other thing to remember is that. When you're talking about, let's look at other villages or other municipalities. There's municipalities around us that are growing at such an exponential rate that their levy is increasing every year and they're able to give higher colas and increase wages. And New Blairis unfortunately has not grown. I mean, our net new construction over this year was negative as we talked, so. Um, that is going to be catalyst in the future. I mean, all that's coming. Um, but just to keep that in mind, that is one of the reasons why the village has been somewhat caft at in terms of being able to dole out. Cola increases or, you know, wage steps as much as other municipalities around us.
So would four thousand help a young employee with three kids? Help cover some daycare expenses? That what we should. earmark it for rather? I mean, daycare expense is a continuing problem.
I.
We can help support our. Village employees somehow, those who need it.
Right.
Just a thought.
Yeah, I would, the only thing I would advocate is just being careful not to segregate certain employees from others. Um, obviously that could definitely be an additional benefit that we explore, but I would never want to take away a benefit that serves everyone. Everybody is eligible to get this. You just have to stay.
Yeah.
Um, and I mean, uh, it's, it's funny, but also it is like, okay, so the people that are leaving and the people that remain fill those roles. Are, you know, are the ones that are there when you know what hits the fan. I mean, this is a reward for those people that have stuck with the village through all of those times.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't think longevity pay is, has, is meritless by any means. I agree with you all that the, the amounts are a little laughable. But the, I think the, the conversation at finance and personnel was if by doubling it, you know, we look at especially some of those longer tenured, I mean, that's a mortgage payment. That's, you know, I, who knows what people would use it on, but it's. It's something more substantial than two hundred and fifty dollars.
So then I would say that I would, I, I motion to approve longevity pay. But yeah, for this year, but I like the idea of looking into it.
Yeah, twenty cents. Yeah, you could look into this every single year, if you want to change it every single year. So I just, Jesse, I want to clarify, what, what longevity pay are you approving? Doubling it?
Yes.
Effective this year?
Yes.
And are you also providing the, the language added about full-time employees only unless you've already received it?
Yes.
So is it going to be paid to the twenty twenty-five? Or to the twenty twenty-six?
I.
For this year or next?
This year.
This year.
This year.
So what will happen is the policy will change. This will be the current policy. If we don't touch it, this will be the current policy until we touch it again.
Yeah.
So we'll just make note that we want to revisit this, you know, next year. Um, and either, you know, revamp it, go in a different direction, what have you, um. But this would, this would be in place until we redo that.
So when do they, like, when will Jeff give his check?
The last payroll of the year, when it goes out, because it, that way, yeah. Because that way it ensures people stay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
Wait, let me understand this. Jeff, it's, if you're twenty-five, you get it. If you're, you're twenty-six, you don't.
No, you get it every year.
Every year.
Last pay, last pay period of the year.
Every year starting at.
Correct.
Okay, good.
I get it now. So somebody that will, somebody that has been here more than twenty-five years, twenty-five years or more, will get seventeen hundred dollars this year as their longevity pay. That's what Jesse just motioned to approve.
Okay, and every second, I believe, John, second.
Thanks, John.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Amy, considerations, discussion, library project update.
The dresses went up this week. They're not complete, but they should be. Uh, retaining wall should also be started later this week. With the roof going on next week. We're submitting, um, just first, uh, three to DOA, um, and they're getting those back to us pretty quickly, so that's nice. And at some point we'd like to schedule a tour for the village board to go through, so.
Have you run into any, um, as you're moving along, any design snags or anything? Is it moving along quite well?
Everything's moving along really well. Not a lot of design mistakes. We are on time and under budget at this point.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Nice.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, no, some period, uh, parts and rec, considerations, question, that's part. Ballfield dugouts.
Barely did, or would you like to?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so at our last park and rec meeting, um, so I should, let me preface that by saying before our last park and rec meeting, uh, myself and Scott, um. Had a meeting with the school district about revamping the vets' park dugouts. They are in need of repair. Um, they are almost unusable at the height of summer because they're fully enclosed with structures. I should say fully enclosed, three sides are enclosed. Um, but the sun beats down. I mean, you can't, we had to take the kids out of it during park and rec for a couple of the games of summer because it's so hot. Um, and they're, they also pose a security issue because when, especially on the visitor side at vets' park, you can't see what's in there when you're coming up. On it, um, so what we'd like to do at very bare minimum was at least make them similar to what we have at Lerner. That was our internal thought is like, at least let's get that where we have chain link fence, fencing, a bench and a tarp to cover pizza. Um, we met with the school district, um, and they have a construction class at the school district that would like to. Have some students work on this project so they can get some experience as well and it would also save some money because it would save some labor. Um, we had a very frank discussion with the school that, um, you know, we want to see these repaired, but we have limited funds. Um, and the school was, was very willing to work with us. Um, actually, uh, Dr. Thayer at the school already wrote a grant for the whole project. On the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars is what we wrote the grant for. That would be like the, we get everything we want in these dugouts. Um, she already wrote the grant and submitted it, so we hope, we hope to hear about that soon. The caveat of it is obviously we're running out of time for this year to start working on concrete and getting things replaced. Um, so Scott has been working really hard on getting quotes and kind of getting an idea of what it would cost. Scott, you want to kind of give a little overview of the concrete issues there now and what we want to do?
Well, the issue with. Just crack broken. Jumping the. Um, what would be the whole game dugout? It's like pulling, pulling up on the dugout. Um, it just needs to be replaced. Plus, when they redid the fence last year, there's like. Patches that need to get filled in. Around the backstop, there's two triangles. We just have filled gravel right now and they need to be filled in. So I met with Bob, uh, from New Blairis Concrete. Um, he, I think. I think it was Thursday I met with him. He's supposed to be getting me a quote. And Kelsey and I, just from talking between he and her, I mean, we were kind of thinking maybe five to ten thousand dollars concrete. And from, and don't quote me, I think, I don't think we're too far off. No, I think we're on the upper end actually.
Yeah. Well, and there's a student at the school that works concrete in the summer and wants to be involved in the concrete work, so we're also speaking with. Um, some local contractors, whoever we go with to see if they would be comfortable having some help. Um, that would hopefully reduce labor costs and obviously we would have a professional supervise and sign off on the work. Um, but in terms of financing, worst case scenario, if we don't get the grant at all, we, that's what we told the school is we can. Probably cover the concrete, um, and gave them that range, but if, you know, we have to wait and see at what the quote comes in at and, um, what the grant is. Um, we have about twenty-one thousand dollars in the sinking fund for park and pool and we have some unused budgeted funds in the, um, park. Twenty twenty-five budget, so I'm very confident that we could cover this expense if need be. Uh, like I said, the caveat here is that we're running out of time to start the concrete. So what Scott and I would like to do is be able to go ahead and start the concrete and just know at the very minimum, if we don't get the grant. And everything else falls through, at least we'll have concrete and we can literally just put the dugouts back on top of them if we have to.
Also, the baseball, the high school baseball guys are looking at, uh, getting involved and getting some funds together as well, which will.
Yeah, yeah, they, we had, um, we had people at our park and rec meeting the other night, which was awesome. Uh, but it was members of high school baseball, youth baseball and they, and boosters and they're really supportive of this project. They're really excited to see it happening and they've committed to helping us. Fundraise and finance this too. If, if this grant doesn't work out, they're fully in to help us with it.
And they have good, uh, communication and we get along with them very well.
Yeah, yeah, no. So it's, it's been a really productive conversation. I don't know if you guys remember when we just resurfaced vets' field. That was a fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar project. And the village only paid five thousand towards that because we have such a good relationship with the school and with the ball, um, the boosters and the youth ball association. So we really want to continue that. Vets' park is in need of repair in numerous places. The dugout is just the start. So what I'm hoping is that this is really just the door opener to doing more of those long-term bigger projects that we'd like to see done, so.
Are you looking at the concrete, uh, to put in now? If we don't get the grant, we still have the concrete.
Exactly.
When is the deadline on that grant or when would we know?
That's the hard part is there's not a set date. Um, they meet once a month, but it's not, it's not at the same time. Um, if they, we applied for a Holy Wisconsin, uh, grant, so, um. So Dr. Thayer is going to let me know as soon as she hears, um, but our, Scott and I's thought process was the concrete has to be replaced. Um, we have some unused budgeted funds. We have some sinking funds, you know, we're pretty confident that. We can do this fiscally responsible, so, uh, we'd like to get moving on it yet this fall and then at the very least we have the concrete done. Um, and can revisit the dugouts if we have to, but of course the school and youth baseball and the boosters have committed to. Helping us finance the rest, but we've been very upfront about. We do not have money to build all new dugouts, so this is what we're able to do and everybody's been really receptive of it.
I would make a motion to approve. Replacing the concrete at the two dugouts at vets', vets' park.
And Larry, can I ask that you're okay with using sinking funds if necessary?
Do we have a, uh, cost, uh, uh? Like five to ten?
That's our range. We, if it would, if it was beyond that, we'd come back to the board before we do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we?
Yeah, yeah.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item thirteen. Announcement, village board will adjourn in full session pursuant to state statutes nineteen eighty-five one. Even deliberating on negotiating the purchase of public property. Investing in public funds or conducting other specific public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining, require full session. And we need to.
A roll call vote? Yep, uh, we need, well, we need to motion to adjourn in full session and roll call.
Second.
All right, Roger?
Yes.
Becca?
Yep.
Jesse?
Yep.
Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Larry?
Yeah.
Peggy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and answer this.